The next item is item number 11, application for a certificate of appropriateness at 111 to 113 East 73rd Street in the Upper East Side Historic District, docket number 16-2003, Block 1408, Lot 8, a modern style building designed by Brown, Lawford, and Forbes and built in 1962. This is an application to alter the front facade.
Good afternoon, Mary Ann Hurley, Preservation Staff. This proposal is to replace the existing modern facade at 111, 113 with a new facade at one of the Buckley School buildings. And we're talking about, let me see, it doesn't work. Talking about the right-hand side here of this complex, if you can see. This was originally a townhouse and the present-day facade was added in 1962 before the Upper East Side was designated. So the image shows at left the design, it illustrates the existing concrete, brick, and glass. The building was also a recessed entry at the first floor. And the proposal that you see here on the right actually has the first floor flush with the building. It has the top floor recessed and is clad with limestone, brick, and copper. I want to bring your attention to A006 on the handouts, so that you get a better idea of what the proposed design looks like. And, not for this, this also gives you a better idea too of what the existing building looks like. The project team is here to present the proposal. Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Jennifer Sage, I'm from Sage &amp; Co Architects. And I'll just elaborate on the presentation that Mary Ann gave. Again, on the left is really the existing conditions and on the right is what we are proposing. Buckley actually bought this building in 1962, they actually bought that building in 1997, but at that point had decided to retain the historic facade and basically renovate behind it. At this point, the building that they, the project that they did in 1962, Brown, Lawford, and Forbes, is something that the school no longer feels, no longer feels matches either the block or the sort of spirit of the school. So let's keep going and I'll tell you some other details of sort of regenerating this. You can see that the building is sort of international style. It stands alone in the neighborhood other than Lescais', and it's really not the best example of that generation of buildings. More importantly, unfortunately, has been sort of speckled with through-wall penetrations to accommodate unit ventilators. The work that we are doing is putting into all new mechanical systems into the facility. And so we'll have the opportunity to really rethink a lot of that. That in keeping with the school's desire to kind of bring this building into the spirit of the block and the spirit of the school has prompted this. In addition, the sort of band of modern windows, sort of modern windows, is a huge heat gain for the school. It's a southern-facing facade and it really does, classrooms really bake in there. So this is a kind of multi-layered inspiration for this work. The ground floor is a bit dark, it's a little forbidding. This is actually how a lot of the lower school students enter. And no one is that happy with the kind of security issues that that faces. When someone drops off a child, a little boy, they go in and they really recede into the shadows and it seems neither generous nor terribly safe. The other piece of work that we're proposing, and this is very small, is the replacement of this panel, which is in fact functioning as a window with an operable door. And we'll be replacing this window, taking out the unit ACs, and this door all in line, painted wood, true divided light. So let's take a step forward. This is the Upper East Side Historic District, there's the building and the, this is also Buckley. This is actually the original piece of the puzzle. They started on Madison and looked at this building in 1917. This is on 74th Street, 73rd Street. And this represents the two buildings we're talking about, 111 and 113 East 73rd Street. So these are the historic photos, that's of 111 and 113, although it captures both. You can see the facade of 111 has really remained largely unchanged. And our work for it, to it, is really not going to change the effect of it at all. 113, on the other hand, was in the 1980s when they decided to take on a new identity, was obviously pretty significantly changed. And sort of our intention to sort of bring it back a little bit. And this, just for a sort of context, is the block, both sides of the block. You can see there's the building as-is over there. This is the other side of the street, which is also occupied by Buckley. We've got, where am I, these two buildings over here. So it, you know, it's a little bit of an oddball in this sort of sequence, even though it's a fairly imperfect and inconsistent array. It is a building that doesn't really sit comfortably with its neighbors. This is a drawing of the existing conditions, again, just the, I think it's precast, it seems to be coated in any case, the through-wall ventilators. This area is recessed, this comes, this is a planter that comes to the sort of, a little bit to the front, but it's always in shadows and nothing really grows there. This is the window that will be replaced by a door. And then this is the facade that we'll be really replacing. Currently, besides the spandrels that are a precast concrete panel that sort of is in the color palette of the limestone, there's a kind of cream and pink-colored brick that frames the opening. And there's the section of, whoop, back up one, yeah, thank you. So there's the section, there's that little bitty planter, the stair that goes down. There's a small clear-story window in there and otherwise that face is in shadow. And so what we're proposing is really to bring the sort of personality of the limestone across the base to give it a more traditional feeling. Provide a sort of decorative grill in the front face so that you don't have that big shadowed space with the stair behind it. Will still need the stairs, an egress stair, but at least the front face of the building becomes a kind of a consistent language. Add a stoop, which will come in line with the neighbor to the east. And that way, when little boys come up there, you can see them get in, there's no pocket of dark space that will prevent, that will create a problem. And then above the sort of, the base, we've taken a sort of base middle and top, the sort of the character of the whole block. We were doing a cream-colored brick to sit comfortably with the limestone next door, but not replicate it. And to set the top floor back, or the sort of profile of the top floor back, again, with a sort of compatible material, with again, not replicating the building next door or any building on the block, but to sort of just feel more comfortable in the array. That is proposed as standing seam copper with again, a decorative grill. But to distinguish the sort of top, the sort of body of the building and the base. The groupings of windows, they have a strong center and are pulled in, which we can go back to the array of buildings on the block, but you'll see there's a real pattern of buildings with a strong center array. But again, reducing the sort of area of glazing so that it doesn't bake during the sort of sunny days. There's the section, we are not adding square footage, we are not really taking any, we're kind of trading what was mechanical space at the base of the window for a little bit of profile and character. And there's the grill, stair remains as-is. We replace the clear story with a full-size window onto the lobby so that we can get a little more daylight in. And otherwise, classrooms and offices will remain the same. And then there's a plan with a stoop, an enlarged planter, the grill on the front face, and the neighbor's area way and planter at the same level, and stoop. So again, the idea is to make it a little more comfortable on the block.
You said, sorry, you said that in describing the existing building, you said it's an international-style building, but it's not a particularly good example. And I actually think it's quite interesting, I like it. But I am curious to know how, when the designation report was drafted, what did they think about this? Because you do have different modern-style buildings.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
No, just, I'm just curious.
They said very little. They said it was well proportioned, I believe, but it was not touted as an earth-shattering or highly significant project. There's a William Lescais building around the corner, which I think was actually his home, which is, you know, much more kind of in the sort of icon of what everybody thinks of. I'm a modern architect myself, I have an appreciation for the building, but it's, it does feel a little uncomfortable on the block. And I know Buckley, who was the original client for it, now feels that it just doesn't represent them or the, you know, the way they, the way they exist in that neighborhood, which is a very low-profile, very modest presence. They don't even have a sign outside. So they feel that this is really not the right message to convey. So that's really what it is. It's also, it's a tired facade, it needs a lot of work and so.
But just, but from, just leaving aside the aesthetics on the block, because, you know, whether it's an uncomfortable mix or it's now been there historically and has become very comfortable. Programmatically, the only reason why you're changing the facade is, what I could gather from your presentation is, one, because the existing windows bring in too much heat and that poses a logistical challenge in terms of keeping the, I guess, making sure that the interior climate is reasonable. And the second was because you felt that the existing facade doesn't reflect Buckley's profile or their philosophy?
It is certainly a request from Buckley that we examine the facade and consider bringing it back to a more traditional look. We don't want to pretend that it was built 50, 80 years ago, that's not, none of us are comfortable with that. But the idea is really to simply bring it back to a stronger masonry presence, have a sort of modesty about it, which is, you know, less aggressively architectural with a capital A, and just have it comfortable in that sense.
Okay. All right, there's more to your presentation?
Not much, I think. There are the renderings of the facade in its context, there's the other Buckley building, the facade we're proposing, and then the buildings adjacent. That's a close-up rendering of the grill. The grill, as we've conceived it, is really a kind of a bronze-colored metal panel that's inspired by the plaques that every Buckley boy cars when they graduate. You see them all over the school, they really have a lot of character and there are plaques from every year that Buckley has existed. And without revealing names and specific years even, we thought there was an opportunity to create a decorative grill that was very Buckley, but that would not scream school, would not scream Buckley, but that would provide the security and the sort of richness that the facade deserves at street level. So again, there's the existing and there's the proposed.
But is the grill flush with the building or is it set back?
It's flush with the new base.
It's flush with the new base.
This, I think this reads a little oddly in this presentation, just because it's a door, so it's articulated a little bit.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's just a door so that the stair is accessible.
But it looks like it's recessed.
It does, that's, sorry, that's a rendered problem.
All right.
And that's just the material palette.
All right.
Bricks and limestone, stoops.
Questions for the applicant? Is any questions?
Just, okay.
Yes, Roberta?
Still that question of why, I don't think is quite answered. I mean, besides, I mean, when they bought the building, this is what it was, pretty much, right? The international style was what?
No, no, they bought it.
They altered it.
They altered it.
So they, oh, now I really don't see. So they offered it to this.
Yes, that's, that's why it's kind of a poignant story, yes. They just feel that it was, you know, a judgment of the time that none of them are really comfortable with anymore. They were the original commissioning client and would like permission to go back to a more traditional design.
When you say go back to the more traditional design, there wasn't the design there before, was there?
Yes, there was.
What was the, okay, I'm confused.
The designation photo, that's what the building was.
That's what it was in the buy-in?
Yes.
And they changed it to this?
But this isn't actually what you're returning to if you were?
No, because, I mean, as modern architects, it would be completely false. We would not be comfortable with that. So we're treading a kind of a funny fine line that I'm sure you know very well, so.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll take testimony and then we can have discussions.
Good afternoon, Michael Hall, Friends of the Upper East Side. While the Upper East Side is perhaps best known for tree-lined streets with rows of historic townhouses and mansions, it also boasts a number of excellent modern structures. As we have testified before the Commission previously, Friends believes strongly in protecting the full spectrum of architectural styles in our neighborhood. The application for changes to 113 East 73rd Street is troubling for a number of reasons. First, the applicant was the original client for the building, and thus it is unsettling that they desire such a drastic change in so little time. Additionally, the Upper East Side has a unique history of modern interventions in the mid-block, which should be celebrated. Important modern townhouse architecture can be found throughout the district, including the 1968 Paul Rudolph Halston apartment on 63rd Street, the 1956 Edward Durrell Stone Building on E64 Street, and William Lescais houses on E70th Street and E74th Street, among others. We acknowledge the fact that the recessed entrance may present security challenges to the school and that sometimes buildings require alterations to accommodate updated needs. That is not an adequate reason to completely change the entire facade in a new style. Modern buildings on the Upper East Side create an interesting juxtaposition among their more traditional neighbors and that variegated assemblage should be safeguarded. The Preservation Committee at Friends strongly opposes this proposal and requests the Commission deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. HTC does not find the proposed destruction of this 1962 facade, a contributing modern structure within the Upper East Side Historic District, appropriate or necessary, and we do not support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right, Community Board Eight has submitted their recommendation, they recommend, I'm sorry, please.
Hi, Tom Stanton, I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the Buckley School. I'm providing a letter that the Headmaster wrote. Dear Members of the Commission, I am writing to you as the Headmaster of Buckley School to request your approval of the replacement of our facade at 113 East 73rd Street, designed and submitted by Sage &amp; Co Architects. Our school was founded nearby Madison Avenue in 1913 and moved to its current location shortly thereafter, with selective additions, including the current facade built in 1962. The school is in the process of a major facility renovation that will include the removal of the existing through-wall openings and improvements to the roof fencing. As part of this work, we have asked our architects to consider a design that better suits Buckley and the neighborhood. Buckley has always been understated, we have no banners or signs on our buildings. So we feel this new design is a more fitting presence on the street. We hope that the Commission will join the school in its support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? Right, Community Board Eight has submitted their recommendation and they recommend that, they recommend approval of this project. All right, do you like to respond to any of the testimony? I just have a, yes, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I would just offer that we are plural modernists in a sense and we think I'm a big advocate for supporting modern architecture, but I just don't think this is the best example to defend. And I think that the school lives day in and day out with the building and there should be some consideration of the image that they project, particularly since they were the original client.
Right, okay. It, yes, yes, please, Adi.
I think, I really, I understand the struggle here. But I would say that this is representative of several aspects of modern architecture that are founded in these principles of, let's say, Le Corbusier's Five Points of Architecture, the horizontal window, the pilote, which is implied here by the recessed ground floor, the free facade, which is uninformed by what's behind it. So I actually think, because it's so connected to those kind of tenets, in other words, it's not purely stylistic, it's almost, you know, demonstrates those principles, it's, it has clarity about it, and it would be a shame to lose that. And with respect to the windows, we know that there are ways to keep sunlight out. So I don't know that that's convincing. So, I mean, we're in a tough place these days when a lot of sort of 20th century progressive ideals are no longer the fad. But, and I think that this is, this may be at that funny, you know, spot. But I feel that it would be a loss to be rid of this building. And especially when you're not saying that you want to return it to its sort of original, original, to the building that preceded, but you want some other version that you're describing as kind of modern still.
Well, in our experience, both with the Landmarks Commission and the sort of character of the neighborhood, it always, it's, that's, replicating an original is never, is never the preferred option. It never looks true. I would only offer, although I'm, you know, I'm, I understand, I mean, I'm part of this conversation really, but that it is a 1962 building.
No, I know.
It's not a 1940 or 1930.
Right, Lescais was building very late and Lescais was building very early and this is a kind of a neighbor in conversation with that, that's true. It is a late version.
Right, although some of those, some of those examples you think of are much earlier. And the Halston building is much later and of a very different character and very much of its time. In a way, this is not so much right-time. It's a, it is a look back to other buildings that are maybe not, you know, better than what they're on.
Yeah, Anna?
Yeah, I agree with Adi. I may, I feel that the, this is a building which was, was, which was designated for its character and could, there might be, there would be even a much better example somewhere, certain there may be. But, and I'm not particularly a fan of the style, it's not one of my favorites in the world. But it seems to me that it's, it is a contributing building. It's not unlike other contributing buildings in this district. And if we were going to have it replaced, it should be replaced with something which really is a contributing building. And I don't find what's presented, to me, has no style, actually, that I can define readily. I don't have a sense that this is a strong architectural statement. If it were, maybe we might say, you know, let's go for yet another new candidate. But we normally don't do that when something is a contributing building. And the arguments that were raised about, you know, the windows, obviously, as you said, you know, you can, there's all sorts of ways to screen windows, that's not really the issue here. It seems that the school just doesn't like the current, doesn't find the current building attractive, but.
Well, I tend to, I tend to agree with what you're saying, which is, you know, first of all, I like this building, but leaving aside that, if, and it's not fully clear to me whether the designation report didn't put some emphasis on it. I think it recognized its style and it also recognized that these modern-style buildings contribute to the historic district. So I think then we're putting this judgment on it, well, we like this one versus something else. And maybe there's a compelling case to make, you know, the Paul Rudolph building may be very different than something that happened over here, but I think that story hasn't been told to us. So at one level, I feel that, at least for myself, I haven't been given enough information to say that this facade should be replaced. I think the next issue is that if it's going to be replaced, then I would agree with Commissioner Chapin that somehow what is being replaced hasn't also been represented or in a persuasive manner to me that that's appropriate. And beyond just the very general that it will add, it's a little more traditional in its materials and it adds to different parts of the street, I think that somehow in comparison with what we have right now, I'm not sure there's a better example. So I, at least at this point, I feel, I feel it's hard for me to support this. Yes, other comments? Yes, Roberta and then Michael?
I was just gonna say that I think it's also, that what you're saying is really the important part in terms of, it's not just what's there, but it's what's coming there. And so even though, as has been said, this may not be the best example of the international style, it still is a better and a more interesting example of the international style than the proposed building is of whatever style it is cut in. I mean, I just think it's better than what they're giving.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, just a minor point, you know, somehow natural light is being depicted as the enemy here, but in my book, it is not. And the new design actually reduces the amount of natural light that's coming through the main facade by more than, it appears 25%, which I think is less than appropriate.
Their goal was to actually reduce the amount of light, but, okay, other comments? Yes?
It's a, certainly an unusual application in my experience that, I think that it's interesting, I mean, I think everyone, the discussions revolved around the two aspects of it. Is it worth removing what you have and what do you put back once you do it? For me, I don't think that, you know, we get caught up in the name game again about, you know, the style designation versus the merit within that style. I don't think there's any question that this is a modern building, but I would say that it's not a particularly distinctive or special modern building. And whether I like it or not, I don't think that its contribution to this district is significant enough that I would, for myself, say that its removal would be out-of-hand denied, no matter what. So I think that the notion of replacing the facade, personally for me, is okay if what is coming to replace it takes a, enhances the district, as was said. And I think that the puzzle that the applicant's been given is a really hard one, to try to hide in plain sight, you know, to try to make something that is more deferential to the neighborhood, less standout-ish, yet clearly it's trying to kind of connect to it, to the school. I mean, it's making gestures to the school, the parapet configuration, the color of the brick, the color of the base. So it's seeking to kind of make some kind of relationship to the townhouse that the school occupies now next door. school occupies now next door, but, which was not the original relationship. So I think that a key to figuring out how to come back with something else would be to consider the nature, the nature of the addition within the context of the district and to say, well, I'm taking an attitude. That attitude is going to be, A, I'm going to put back something like the old townhouse, so it's going to totally disappear and blend in and be just another townhouse. B, I'm going to make it a campus building, part of the, part of the school, and I'm going to try to identify it as part of the school. C, it's going to be, you know, a modern building that kind of, you know, whereas that one, where in '62 they made it contemporary for its day, I'm going to make it contemporary for our day. You know, something that kind of says, this is, this is my view towards doing something in the district, and that it's in our historic district, there's a conversation with history, and here's my position in that conversation.
Yes, Fred?
I don't think it's that complicated. I think it's very interesting and almost inevitable that you start wondering, is the replacement design better than the current design? But I, I think that's a slippery slope, because I, as a designer, I have my opinion on that, which is not inconsistent with what I've heard around the table, but I don't think that's the issue here. I think the issue here is whether this building that exists can be demolished. And in a nutshell, you don't have to say it's the best of the genre or the worst of the genre. It's, it's, it's a building which, which has nestled in its place for fifty years now or more. It's settled in, it's a part of this block, even as it stands out somewhat from other, more buildings in the block. And from my way of thinking, it can't be removed. So it's not about a new design so much as about just this design. Now, can it be changed somewhat? Can it be altered to accommodate some of Buckley's desires? I'm sure that it can, although carefully, because the building has established a series of, of moves here which can't be violated easily, but certainly something in that lower level could, could be changed, I think. And I think the grills, which have been cut, I gather, cut in later, I'm not sure of that, could certainly be handled in a much more elegant way than they are now as a, as a retrofit. But from my mind, I don't think this building should be removed from the Upper East Side.
I, I would second Commissioner Bland's opinion there. I think a phrase I had just heard, I am not familiar with in our context, which is a building that's not significant enough. I think if it was actually declared to be significant in the first place, then I'm exactly where Commissioner Bland is, which is that I don't think, just because I happen to not like the style of the modern building, that doesn't mean that I can treat it with any less respect than if it was built, since it was built in '62. I myself was built in '62, I have a lot of respect for that. But if, if I was built in 1922, I think I'm not any more or less significant, and therefore I don't know about changing, changing the facade, even though I don't like it.
Right, the only thing I would say is that sometimes we will find that the terminology in reports vary over time, and so what the commission hears and how they interpret that sometimes depends. So, the issue of style, no style, contributing, non-contributing, these are all different sort of things that go out there. I think that in this particular, and we may some, I only want to point out that we may at some point come across buildings that have a style, as written in the report, which, where it's appropriate to demolish it, and we've in fact done that recently, so it's not outside the realm of possibility and what this commission actually approved a couple of weeks ago. So we may find ourselves doing that. This, here, I think the issue is that the style is very apparent, and for me, I think there's a simple way of sort of approaching this application, which is to look at some of the ground floor uses and the kind of intervention that you're doing there, and that's a very sort of simple approach, which is, for most part, the building is not going to be changed at all, and there's some programmatic needs that you need to fulfill regarding security, and the school could look at that. If it's coming back and really wants to change the style of the facade, then I would have to say that at this point, there's no, there's no ability for this commission to take a look at this building and say, okay, here is a building with a style that should be demolished, because it's very, it's based on just one example. We haven't seen what there is elsewhere, and they haven't made, at least made any compelling case as to why this versus something else should not be demolished. So, I think just to sort of round up, clearly the commission is very split. I don't think we want to support this project now. I think the question is really for Buckley School whether it wants to proceed with minor interventions, which is at the ground floor. But if you want to pursue this, the re, a fairly significant change to the building, then I think you're going to have to do a lot more work and try and get the commission to support that. And I don't know if you want to respond now to that or whether you want to come back. Yes?
I would have to talk to the Buckley School. I think it's, it's possible that they will elect to work with the commissioner of the staff that's allowed just with the ground floor. No, I can't speak to them.
All right, well, then why don't you come back and then you can respond back to that issue? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
We'll close the hearing.